Coram is present, I'll call the meeting to order. Would you please stand for the invocation delivered by George's Tudor and remain standing for the Fledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, this is the day that you've made and we want to rejoice in it. Don't let the clouds and darkness cloud our way of thinking. We ask you to provide clarity of heart and mind this morning so all good decisions will be made. And we ask you to help us in our deliberations and bless us so we can be blessed in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Item number four ceremonial matters, proclamations and employee recognitions. I know I have a couple of proclamations but let's give other things first. Do you have an employee?
We have a swearing in our city attorney.
It's not this word. I think it's a bit off as a new word. The city of Texas. Not a word. It's a, you know, the check. No energy. I'm a patient. Mark. And at this time.
Bless, that's where. Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, whereas emergencies can occur at any time, our police, fire, or emergency medical services. Whereas an emergency, when an emergency occurs with proper response, our police officer, firefighter, emergency medical services personnel is critical in protection and preservation of life and property. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon quality and the accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone through the Westbury County Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas the public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activity on our radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications plus the county communication center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited passion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year and making them first responders, sidekicks, and part of the super team. Now therefore being resolved, and I Gerald Hoover, Mayor of the City of Fredericksburg, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Health Communicator Group in Fredericksburg. And I ask the citizens honor the men and women who diligent and professionalism help keep our city and citizens safe. Bless this year who received this on behalf. Second proclamation today. Whereas children thrive in safe, stable nurturing families by establishing partnerships that fortify the bonds between parents and children, Fredericksburg can build strong, healthy families in resilient thriving communities. And whereas sadly, child abuse remains a significant public health issue. But we will continue to identify the risk factors that these child abuses reflect. By so doing, we will ensure that our safe children are safe and secure. And whereas in fiscal year 2022, there were 56,944 confirmed victims of abuse and neglect in Texas. With 28 children being confirmed victims from Westbury County. There's a great need for the community to come together to help create a safe county for children and families. And whereas ultimately child abuse prevention cannot be relegated to a single community, agency, or system. We each have a role to play as we work together to protect the most vulnerable among us. Behind many healthy, successful families is a strong community that enables them to meet their own needs. And we must work together to strengthen our communities and build accessible, localized support systems. These systems in turn contribute to the well-being of the entire community by keeping children safe and families whole. And whereas we recognize the dedicated professionals across our great state who meet families upstream before a crisis occurs and offer them accessible lifelines that mitigate their challenges. A collaborative, multi-passated endeavor, child abuse prevention involves the diligent work of families, friends, neighbors, houses of faith, advocacy groups, nonprofit organizations, schools, healthcare providers, social workers, and government agencies. Now therefore I, Mayor Gerald Hoover, City of Fredericksburg, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2023, as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. I encourage all citizens of the city of Fredericksburg to learn more about the many ongoing efforts to create positive, healthy environments for the children of our great city and state. Together, we assist with painting the city blue in support of the abuse prevention and awareness and witness thereof April 4th this day, 2023. Okay, Mayor, Council, citizens present, we have three new employees that we'd like to recognize and two employee recognitions. If we could start with the new employees, please. If I could have Jeremy Garcia, Caleb If I could have Jeremy Garcia, Caleb Bernhard, and Ryan McPhee up here, and whoever's going to recognize them. One sanitation department employee, one street department, and then one fire EMS. Chris?
Sure. My privilege this morning to introduce two new public works, team members. First, Jeremy Garcia, excuse me, and Caleb Bernhard. Caleb is a new employee in the street department, crew worker one, born and raised in Fredericksburg, has worked for some construction. Latest employment was with Lockdies, so if anybody goes to Lockdies, you would have seen him there throwing feed sacks. Really happy to have him on board, young employee wanting to make a career here at the City of Fredericksburg. Mr. Garcia is a new employee in the sanitation department, our chipper crew. For those of you that live in town, you'll see his face coming around, picking up brush on a weekly basis, that great service that the city provides. Mr. Garcia comes to us with some experience, latest experience with Superior Tree Service, so very familiar with that vegetation side. And with both of these, I'd love to have an applause. Welcome into the City of Fredericksburg.
Excellent.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Ryan couldn't be here this morning, but I wanted to recognize Ryan McPhee, newest member of our fire EMS system here in Gillespie County. Ryan comes to us from here locally. He lives here in Fredericksburg. He started our volunteer organization and has moved up and currently will be coming to work for us full-time on April the ninth. So, want to recognize Ryan.
And regarding our chipping program, Garrett, how many tons a month do the guys chip? Is it somewhere in the range of four, forty tons, forty tons a month, something like that? It's a great workout program, anybody that's interested. No gym membership needed for that. Okay, couple of employee recognitions. Let's start with Officer Pablo Martinez. And again, I almost have to laugh at these. I mention it every time. Speeding ticket. This was a handwritten letter, not an email. Someone took the time. A Brian Murphy, not a city resident, wrote a letter to our chief of police for this guy pulling him over for a speeding ticket and being so nice and professional and courteous while doing so. So credit to the entire department for their passion, their completeness, again, for their professionalism. We get a lot of these types of things. I think I'm just going to speed down Main Street and get pulled over and see what the experience is like, because I'm just wondering at this point. So, congratulations and thank you for your service. Okay, Chris Mead, Touchstone Golf. If I can have Chris Mead come up here, please. And Chris Mead is our Touchstone Golf Regional Manager. He manages Ladybird Johnson Golf Course, along with a number of other golf courses in this region. This is his home base. And he hates it when I recognize him for doing anything great, certainly, but this is definitely an honor. Chris was recently honored as a top fifty kids coach by United States Kids Golf Association. This is the second time he has received this award. The top fifty coaches come from twenty-nine states across the country. So, I can remember when Touchstone Golf first started, you know, all of the companies that we interviewed said, "We're going to make money. We're going to make money. We're going to make money." But Touchstone Golf said something different. They said three things. "We're interested in the preservation of the game of golf." We see a lot of people that are quitting golf, getting a little bit too old to play the game. So the youth golf component was very important to them, something that's been very successful in municipal golf across the country. And the third thing is they wanted to change the perception, community's perception of the golf course. So, Touchstone Golf has involved youth golfers from across the region, and not only in Fredericksburg, but Kerrville in our program, who branch is involved. So they have certainly done that. Later today, we're going to be talking about a charter amendment. The charter amendment was based on a transfer or transfers from enterprise funds to the general fund. Chris, I just wish we would have met you a little bit earlier before that was necessary. So congratulations on this award. Item number five, Council comments.
I have three things. One, Toucha Truck was on March twenty-third and was so fun for kids and adults. The city really did a great job, and all departments were there and showcasing the wonderful work of our staff. So if you were there, raise your hand, because it was so fun. Great. Number two, the park survey is live, and it is very short. It's only seven questions. Please, please, please make sure that you complete it. I don't think it's on city social media, but I've got a link on mine, or you can just email me, and I can send it to you. Third thing, council is all wearing blue to show support for children in the Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, and just wanted to encourage all, if you see abuse, please report it. The phone number is one eight hundred two five two five four zero zero, or you can go to www.txabushotline.org. And of course, if a child's life is in danger, please call nine one one. And Friday, April seventh, is Texas's Go Blue Day, so we are demonstrating how you can wear blue in support of children on April seventh. Thanks.
I'd like to just comment on Les and his team at the communications center. I've had the opportunity to witness them in action two different occasions. One, the ice storm several years ago, and the recent ice storm. And they do an amazing job around the clock. They sleep up there during the emergencies, and to watch them in action, they're just an amazing team. And congratulations, Les, and for putting the team together and doing such a great job.
I just wanted to, and Clint's going to update, we've all been concerned about the short-term rental renewals and what else. And we visited last week, and he shared with me, and he'll share with y'all, sir, that there's some progress, quite a bit of progress, and that's a good sign. The other part, I kind of had a question with, now that the hospital transaction's completed. Have we done our letter, joint letter? I've been told the school also joined in that resolution. So I'm not sure if we prepared that letter and actually sent it in. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Mayor, can I, or Mick, can I speak to the SDR permit update on this council comment? Yes. I don't have it noticed as an item on mine.
I think that you're responding to the comment.
So in response to Councilmember Klein, we did meet yesterday as staff and talked about the roughly five hundred renewal permit backlog that we're working on. We're having a very hard time keeping up with the regular renewals, about a hundred a month with this backlog behind it. So we've made some decisions to move that process forward, and we feel like we can probably get through eighty, ninety percent of those in the next several weeks. So we made some adjustments to the process. For those of you that are SDR owners in the audience or involved in that, you'll be seeing some correspondence come from the city in that regard, but just clearing out that backlog of permits, of permit renewals that are coming in again, so it's much more manageable moving forward. Any other council comments? All right, item number six is consent agenda. Two items is to approve the minutes from the last regular meeting, March twenty-one, and approve the purchase of this asphalt patch truck for the street department in the amount noted there, and with the explanation for further financing on that. This is a budget approved, and then the overage is accounted for in the explanation. Do you want to move this as a two-item consent?
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second motion, second to approve this consent items, these consent items. Any further discussion? Questions? All right, all prepare for the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent item passes. Thank you. Item number seven, seven A, Amendment to Ladybird Johnson Municipal Golf Course Fees. So we go immediately to the presentation. It's going to be Chris or you? Okay, Chris. We'll have Chris Mead present. Chris Mead? Morning, and Mayor, Councilmembers. We are asking, the request is to adjust our golf cart rental rates, not our fees to play the golf course, but just to combat the increased cost of doing business. The new golf cart fleet came in in January significantly more expensive than the prior fleet, as is everything else we purchase nowadays. It is a, to kind of summarize the entire ordinance, a three-dollar increase on an eighteen-hole round of golf, and a two-dollar increase on a nine-hole round of golf, if you ride a golf cart. Questions? Anything further? No, sir. Staff recommends approval of this small increase for the golf cart rental rate. I move to approve as presented?
Second.
Much a second to approve this as presented. Any further discussion? All prepare for the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chris. Item seven B is a franchise agreement regarding Universal Natural Gas. It will begin with the presentation from Mr. Canazy.
Morning, Mayor, Council. So, Natural Gas LLC, Universal Natural Gas LLC, excuse me, approached the city here a couple months back about entering into an agreement with the city to install a gas distribution system within the city of Fredericksburg's public right-of-way. This franchise agreement particularly is to serve the Friendship Oaks development currently, but obviously in the future, they would like to expand that to other areas of the city if those developers are interested and/or other property owners. The franchise agreement is included in the packet here. It's about thirteen pages. It is a pretty standard document. Within franchise agreement language, Mick has reviewed that. We also have a gentleman, Richard Bard, here from the Universal Natural Gas LLC, representing them this morning. If you do have any other questions. It's my understanding that this ordinance does require two readings. The second reading has to be a minimum of thirty days after this first reading, so this will be brought back to council for a second reading at a future date. Be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Bard is here as well to answer any questions, as well as the city attorney.
Thank you, Chris. Curious how this franchise agreement compares to what we have with Atmos?
Sure. I had an opportunity to take a look at that yesterday. Very similar. The franchise fee is the same, so it's five percent of the gross revenue of gas customers served here in town, but very similar language across the board.
And, hi, Richard. Thanks for being here.
Morning.
Y'all are out of Magnolia? Is that right?
Yes. So we're based out of Magnolia, Texas is where the companies were originally founded. We since moved over to the Woodlands, Texas. We operate all over the state.
I was just curious, if something happens, if there's a gas leak, how do y'all communicate with your customers? Do you use texting, emails? Like, what do y'all do?
Yeah, so we have local representation, you know, to handle any issues that may arise. We do standard detection tests, things like that. But we do communicate, if there is an issue that arises with our customer through, we have a phone tree that occurs based out of our phone center in the Woodlands. And so that is how we communicate any issue that may arise.
So do you provide it for anybody in the city limits? Is it available for anybody in the city limits?
Yes, sir. We'd look at any deal that comes across.
But this is just for the Friendship Oaks area, or is it citywide?
Currently. Obviously, to get that infrastructure across citywide, they would, you know, have to look at how that fee structure would be, you know, serving those customers. I think currently it's Friendship Oaks. I actually, another developer reached out to me last night asking for contact information. The Frieden, Skip Preble, reached out. So I think, you know, once they're present, there could be other interest. Those customers that are currently being served by Atmos, you know, whether Universal Natural Gas would want to have that capital cost of expanding those utilities, I guess they would look at that depending on how many customers they might have interested.
Is the actual infrastructure city-owned?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they, will they put their own infrastructure in?
That's right. This is a private utility, not operated or maintained by the city at all, just like Atmos.
So, with that five percent of growth, did they pay an estimate at the beginning of the year, or is it at the end of the year, or quarterly?
Atmos is structured quarterly. I'm not sure this one is quarterly or annually.
Are these edits in what we have before us made by you? At your direction? Okay.
Some of these were from Daniel when he was still the city attorney, right before Daniel.
Okay. And so this is the first reading?
Yes, sir.
And that means, excuse me, no action today?
Correct.
Any other questions, Council? All right.
I appreciate the time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Where is Magnolia?
So if you're familiar with the North Houston area, halfway between the Woodlands and Conroe, just kind of west of forty-five.
Okay, because the address on the contract was the Woodlands.
Yeah. So we've switched office space.
Okay.
As our company has grown.
Okay, good. Thank you for being here.
No, thank you, yes.
Are we ready for seven C? Approved Resolution twenty twenty-three oh six R, nominating a candidate to fill vacancy on the appraisal district board. This will be something that we will discuss in executive session. Is there anything to be prepared at this point, Clint? Nothing further to add at this moment. Okay. So, Council, we intend to make a recommendation this morning at the end of the meeting via the executive session. All right, we're at item eight A. Am I correct? Are we going through this this fast? Okay, I'm just unused to this.
Love it.
Okay. Yeah, eight A is, oh, I see, Mick Schmidt, okay. Approve the Second Amendment to the commercial lease agreement for the Girl Scout Cabin. Andrea?
Morning, Mayor and Council. Andrea Schmidt, Parks Department. So this morning is just a lease extension of the Girl Scout Cabin. There was an extension done in twenty sixteen for five years, and then another one done a couple of years ago with a one-year extension, with a one-year option, which they took. So at this time, we're just presenting the same amendment for another one year with a one-year option for the Girl Scout Cabin. One consideration you might want to take is if we want to make this longer, or possibly maybe do it for two years with a hundred and twenty days advance notice with an automatic renewal every year, or we can do it like it's presented.
Is that your recommendation?
Is that your recommendation?
I would recommend just to go for a longer lease, or have an automatic renewal every year where we can give, either organization can give a hundred and twenty days advance notice or something like that.
A longer lease helps them with planning?
I would think so, yes, ma'am.
And we currently don't have any plans for that facility other than Girl Scout Cabin. That's correct. Speaking as a person, I've spent most of my adult life in nonprofit work. I know that it's not a huge issue to have to do this every year, but it is an issue. And often, time and staff and resources is in short supply. So I would prefer that we offer a longer term, or, and I'm not sure what the advantages are to either one, either like a five-year term or an open-ended, if there's such a thing, but year to year with a hundred and twenty day notice if we decide that we've got a use for that, a compelling use for that for the city purposes. Y'all have any comment about that?
No, and of course, you can always put in a hundred and twenty day if there's any change. Answer some notice. But I agree, no, I think it's been there forever, the same.
They're taking good care of it?
Yeah, we have requested them make some repairs this last time, and they made all those repairs. We do have a representative here if there are any questions for her.
Right, I'd like to call attention to that. The Girl Scout program was basically dead in Fredericksburg a few years ago until Bonnie Bazee took it over as a private project from Santa. She's here today. She has helped up that program, not just in Fredericksburg, but all over the surrounding areas. If y'all don't mind, if we're going fast, I'd like for her to come up.
Absolutely.
And tell you what she's done over these years and how she's.
Are you going to make Gala?
No, I'm talking about Bonnie Munn.
Oh, come on up. We want to hear from you. And is Gala your replacement?
Gala is the city's special counsel, program counsel.
Okay, okay.
I took over the program of the Girl Scouts about five years ago, and during COVID, when we weren't allowed to meet, when we did start meeting, we had eight girls. And our troop right now has over thirty girls. And I have started a troop in Johnson City this past year. We have a troop in Harper, and we have a troop in Blanco, and I'm over all of these troops. My Girl Scouts this year sold seventeen thousand, six hundred and five boxes of cookies.
Wow, that's a lot of colors.
I'm very proud of what I have accomplished with the Girl Scouts, and I diligently tried to improve the looks of the facility. And I've been working with Gala, trying to improve the structure as well. So hopefully, y'all will extend our lease for a longer time so that I can keep trying to improve this property and improve the program. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
So I guess it's up in the air that we renew this or make a motion to renew the lease on an annual basis automatically?
What's the best way for us to move this, that they don't need to come back to the year?
Maybe five years. Since we did the last one in twenty sixteen, it was five years, do five years, and then maybe can automatically renew year to year, a hundred and twenty day notice, if that's okay with the city attorney.
Move that.
I'll make that motion. We do an amendment to approve the Girl Scout lease and make it a five-year renewal.
And that would be at the same term, I mean, the same month?
With a hundred and twenty days.
Is there?
I don't have the money, I mean, just.
There's no fee, right?
Right.
I think it's four dollars.
Four dollars a year.
Oh, my goodness. Got to double that.
Anyway, so, okay.
I make that motion.
So the motion is to extend the lease for the Girl Scouts five years.
As a former Girl Scout, I second.
All right, I have a motion, second to approve this extension of Girl Scout Cabin. Any further question, discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you for your good work. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being here, ladies.
Andrea is still here to automate, receive an update on the addition of an LBJ and Admiral Nimitz bus to the Pioneer Garden and a memorial bench in honor of Timothy Cook.
Yes, sir. So the one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary committee has some remaining funds. They wanted to close out their budget, decided to donate this to the Market Square Redevelopment Commission. They asked for it to be used for three different purposes. One is to add two busts to the Pioneer Garden or the History Walk Garden at Market Square. One would be of Admiral Nimitz and the other one of LBJ. The second purpose would be for a memorial bench for Timothy Cook to also be placed at Market Square, and then any remaining funds would be used for the project that's ongoing right now on the Northwest Corner. So we did find an artist here locally, Jonas Perkins, who's done quite a bit of work around the state. And there was an article recently written in the Hill Country, Hill Country, Texas Hill Country Guide regarding him and his good work. So he would create the two busts. We would reuse the pedestals that are out there now that were donated by the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary committee. They'll be lifted up, and then the busts will be put on the top. The bust will match Broadbeck's bust pretty closely, the one that's already out there in the Pioneer Garden. Timothy Cook bench would also match the benches that are currently on the square. It would just have a little nameplate on it for his memorial. And then there's going to be a few thousand dollars left over we can use for the project out there on the Northwest Corner.
So we have to make a motion to approve that? I so do.
Second, motion second to approve this. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. Item number nine, city manager's report.
Okay, we'll start with Berens Creek Cleanup Status Update. I'll have our emergency management coordinator, Justin Calhoun, give the update. This is something Emily asked to be placed on my report. You may have noticed a little bit of activity down in the creek in the last couple of months. There's some materials down there. We've been getting reports of barrels and things like that, so we'll report on what all of that means and the status of the cleanup at this point.
Justin? Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm going to go over a brief timeline of what happened and where we're at currently. So on February sixth, there was a fuel spill at five oh nine South Adams. Fire NMS responded to that location. We found that there was some gasoline in Berens Creek. We began placing booms that float on top of the water, suck up those petroleum products, and we also put pads down. We called the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. They came out along with Texas Parks and Wildlife and began investigating the source of the spill. They hired a cleanup crew, and they began working on it that afternoon. On February eighth, they removed the pavement from the spill site, and they began sampling the soil there. And then on February sixteenth, they went ahead and flushed that storm drain, and they cleaned the concrete at the end of the storm drain, and they sucked up all the product in a vacuum truck and removed that. About six thousand gallons of water and product they removed there. They continued to change those booms out over the next few weeks. They did not find much product in those booms after about the first week. And that leads us to, basically, yesterday, we got an update from the cleanup crew. They have removed all those barrels at this point, and they got word yesterday that all the sampling came back, and they're going to be able to remove the booms this week. I'll answer any questions you have.
That sounds really expensive. Is the entity that caused the spill going to pay for all of it?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Thank you.
The only, only thing the city did was those first couple of days with what we did on the initial response, and we helped the cleanup crew kind of get set up to do that.
Thanks, Justin. Is there any sort of restoration, like in the creek bed, that needs to be done?
Not that I'm aware of. TCEQ and Texas Parks and Wildlife have cleared it all, and they did soil sampling along the riverbank for the creek bank and did water samples as well.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Justin. Y'all make us proud.
Okay, next, enforcement of watering restrictions. And for everybody in attendance and listening today, watching today, we are officially in stage four, watering restrictions, which is watering once per week per the last digit of your address only in the evenings. So I did do a drive around this morning for about the first thirty minutes, and I was very happy that I did not see any wet sidewalks, dry plaz streets, and so forth. So a number of us are doing this. We have public works crews that are on crash pickup routes, things like that, watching as well. Again, trying to get compliance, especially in this first month, because this is a very big change, and information gets out, and it's consumed relatively slowly. I'd like to thank Ken Cook for the article in the newspaper last week stating that the city feels made the right move, moving to stage four again, protecting this resource. So in terms of enforcement, we understand, again, that this information, it does get out and is consumed and understood relatively slowly. So when it comes to the watering time of the day, we're being a little bit easier on that violation. If you're watering on the wrong day, waste of water, things like that, Chris and I just talked about this issue, violations are still a big issue. Those are being routed through the administrative adjudication process. The fines for these violations, just to give everyone an idea, the first violation is twenty-five dollars, the second is two hundred and fifty, the third is seven hundred and fifty, and seven hundred and fifty after that. So again, as we're watching our well levels, as we're trying to enforce the code, as we're trying to get compliance, we have a keen eye on that resource out there. And we're going into the year this year, well level's lower than they've been in the past couple of decades. So we're really in a, in a position we've not been in before going into what looks like is going to be another hot, dry summer. Just a couple of other items to note. There has been some focus on Boot Ranch and their water consumption. We are meeting with Boot Ranch ownership management this afternoon to talk a little bit more about these restrictions and what our expectations are for Boot Ranch. I did have the top one hundred water users on the residential side, including Boot Ranch, pulled for February last month. And again, just to address the focus on Boot Ranch, out of the top one hundred users, there were twelve in Boot Ranch. Out of the top ten, there were only two located in Boot Ranch. So I will say that when it comes to these very high water consumers, generally a visit with them curbs some of those bad acres and get compliance. So we're going to continue watching that very closely. Additionally, I'm meeting Chris and I with Ken Cook a little bit later this week to talk about another article, a monthly article in the paper, where we pull in landscape professionals, irrigation professionals, and so forth, giving recommendations for conversion systems there escape and more efficient watering techniques, that sort of thing. Just to put the awareness out there, just to continue to educate the public. We've had a couple of other ideas. Carol Hammerson mentioned a copy with the city manager, trying to develop a successful campaign for FISD students to get behind this water conservation effort, kind of like the no smoking, you know, movement. I think the kids are pretty good at, you know, pointing out to mom and dad that, you know, you don't need to be watering this morning or this weekend or whatever the case may be. Chris, do you have anything to add to that report?
Sure, I'll just add a couple of things. As Quentin mentioned, the public outreach really during the month of April here, there will be a utility bill stuff for all utility customers. Get that hard copy. If you get your bill electronic copy, it'll be a PDF. As part of that bill, Quentin mentioned the newspaper, of course, social media is really big as well. At least push that information out via the city website and social media sources. Thursday morning, I'll be meeting with a bunch of irrigation companies. So those of you that have sprinkler systems that don't set those yourself, those irrigation companies hopefully will be able to reach out, educate their customers as well, and spread that word more quickly. So that'll have it added.
Repetition's always good. I'm getting some questions now about Jacuzzi swimming pools and so forth. Would you repeat how stage four impacts them?
Certainly. Any evaporation lost within a Jacuzzi or swimming pool can be filled on your day of watering. If you need to drain an existing swimming pool or Jacuzzi completely and refill, we have a variance. That variance application is now on the city's website. Similarly, if you have a new pool that's being constructed that you need to fill, there's a variance application as well that you would need to submit to the city prior to doing so. Thank you.
So it takes all of us to conserve water. So again, our main objective here is compliance.
I've had a lot of questions about the watering in the evening. So when you do these public service announcements, can you include some of the evidence that we, that was used for your recommendation, even evening watering as opposed to morning watering?
Yes, ma'am.
And in the paper maybe too?
Certainly.
And my second one is, seven hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fifty and seven hundred and fifty. And then we, as a public utility, after so many of those, we have the right to turn off the water.
That's correct.
How is, how many seven fifties before we get to, oops, the shower's not running?
Right, and that might be a good question for our city attorney. We've never had that issue in the past where we've had to do that. We do have meters that we can turn down to a trickle, where you can still fill up a glass of water to take medication or brush your teeth, whatever the case may be, but it is certainly inconvenient. You know, our last ditch effort to get compliance would be to terminate a utility service.
Okay. That's basically the answer. The ordinance gives the city manager the authority to reduce service after multiple violations and to discontinue service after, given three violations, if these happen to be serious. We do have, of course, the priority termination of service. For that reason, we would do a survey of property, make sure there's no health issues or medical concern. Quentin said you can provide limited service. And I would like to point out that that ordinance and the restriction of service and discontinuance of service if there are multiple violations applies every week, no matter where they're located.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a question on our water rates. Are they tiered? Can you explain what the levels are?
Yeah, certainly. So the customer that uses five thousand gallons a month is paying a much, much lower rate per thousand gallons than the person that's using twenty-five or thirty thousand gallons a month. I don't have the exact breakdown, but I want to say it's at six thousand gallons per month. The rate per thousand jumps, ten thousand gallons per month, and that rate jumps, continues to jump as you continue to use more water. So that customer is paying more per thousand gallons, more dollars per thousand gallons as it continues to increase. So it's in an effort to, you know, those that are just using it for indoor use, for everyday use, to pay a much lower rate than those that are using it for outdoor irrigation, they're going to be paying a whole lot more for the water.
And when's the last time we looked at water rates? Just curious.
Two thousand and eighteen, I believe, is the last. Two thousand and eighteen or nineteen was the last adjustment. And that was a part of the November two thousand and eighteen water bonds, revenue bonds that were sold, that's when we looked at the rates.
That was also on the tail end of our wastewater reclaim water master plan, where we identified and prioritized a number of capital improvement plan projects and established the rates, again, based on weather and so forth, so that we could begin addressing those capital improvement plan projects. Some of the projects were debt funded, the ones that Chris is talking about, the other ones were pay as you go. So we plugged all of this information into a spreadsheet and developed these rates, again, based on the projects that were very critical, needed to be done on the water and wastewater side, and then also servicing that debt moving along. But it's probably a good time to take another look at that. I don't anticipate, and we've talked to the engineer that did the rate analysis and rate design back in two thousand and eighteen, there's really no need to make an adjustment going into stage four right now. If we continue to stay in this stage for many years, it's definitely something that we'd need to consider. But again, that target, as we look at the reduction, is twenty percent average, and I think we probably met that going into stage three. I mentioned that last time. So again, using that data as a baseline, we'll compare that to after a year and see if we've met that twenty percent. Hopefully, it'll start raining again, and we can go out and not have to worry about this. Reality that we're in right now, we're being very cautious. But the reality that we're in right now, we're being very cautious to do this. Next, there's a charter review committee. So, the city's charter was established in 1991, when the city was incorporated. And the charter was not updated until 25 years later, although it's stated in the charter that it will be updated every five years. So, the last time that was updated was seven years ago. There was a committee of 14 established in the 2015-16 timeframe. Pretty good cross-section, business owners, realtors, council members, a former mayor, three staff members. It was the city manager, then city attorney, and city secretary. There were 29 amendments that came out of that. I thought it was timely to get this on the agenda right now, as it was a question posed to the council member candidate at the Republican Candidate Forum. I believe our candidate, council candidate Randy Riley, made the comment that the charter might not be updated. He's right. It does change with state law. So, again, talking about it right now and thinking about who you might consider, including on a roughly 10 to 15 member committee to review that. It takes about six months to review the last time around. There were actually 29 amendments, a lot of them disappointing and so forth. Council compensation was one of them here, so here's your chance. Yeah, I think it doubled almost from $200 to $400 a month. But again, thinking about, you know, who you might be interested in, including in that charter review. Let's wait until after the legislative session, we have a little bit better idea what laws might change that affect the city charter. Probably wrap up the effort sometime in the December, January 24 timeframe to package all that up, to get it on potentially the ballot for 2024. So, again, trying to get well ahead of this. We'll bring it up again with the new council. This document, the city charter, is certainly something that we will review with the new council once they are seated. Be happy to answer any questions on that particular item.
All right, thank you, Quentin. Item 10, items for future agenda. Review the future agenda.
Okay, so coming up on the 18th, we have a number of street closures around market plots, primarily for special events on the square. We like to get all of these on the same agenda and get them done all at one time. Andrea, do you have anything specific to add on any of these? Or council, any questions on any particular street closures?
Are you saying we don't have them all? Because this is pretty, there's more.
This is going to be the vast majority of them for special events. We try to put them all on the same agenda so that we can talk about them. A lot of them have very, are very typical. But again, just so the council can look at it one time, and we don't continue bringing this item back.
Do you need approval? Do you need a motion? Do you need a motion? No?
Not right now. No, ma'am. These are just coming up on the 18th.
Okay, thank you.
We do have a number of planning items. A lot of these will be going to P&amp;Z Garrett. Any ones in particular you would like to touch on here?
No, sir. P&amp;Z will consider a number of these items tomorrow night at their regularly scheduled meeting. A number are going to be postponed, so they will be off this future agenda. But the 112 East Schubert CUP, that's relating to an STR. It's an expansion of an existing STR permit. And the same goes for the Creek Street property. That is a permit that expired. It's in our 2 district, in the historic overlay. So, that'll be coming back to you for additional consideration. And I think the rest of them will be postponed.
Am I missing the second reading of what we did today? The franchise?
May 2nd.
May 2nd. Thank you.
Sure.
Are we working on a joint planning and zoning council meeting for next STR question?
Yes, we have polled P&amp;Z, so we have a general idea. I believe they have an item to discuss, a schedule for that. We're able to talk about it if you have a preferred date, potentially sometime next week. If you have any thoughts. I will be sending out a lot of additional information later today, some of the questions that were asked, just addressing some of them.
Are we able to date now or no?
You don't set the meeting now?
It's, there's some days to be, next week.
Well, as I notified you all, I'll be out Tuesday to Friday.
But these are choices.
Yeah.
Not the day. Commissioner's Court is at nine, so that'll be at the afternoon.
Yeah, Commissioner's Court in the morning, and then we have a staff leadership retreat, I believe, scheduled that afternoon.
Correct.
So, we may have to look at the following week.
I thought you were out Wednesday.
It'll be Tuesday.
P&amp;Z, you have to.
Just had to reschedule something. What time are you thinking? So, because of my schedule.
If it doesn't work, that's fine. I'm just trying to get him up for the pair.
So, we can check with P&amp;Z, see if those members would be available Monday evening of the 10th. Otherwise, possibly looking at the 18th, I think had been a date that was thrown. I know we have a council meeting, possibly that afternoon.
Either one's good for me. Monday evening's good?
Okay.
Not for me.
Monday evening?
No. Okay, so the following week.
Are you talking about the 10th or the 7th?
Yeah.
So, the following Monday?
Sunday or Tuesday?
Who's the 18th? In the. Is that what we're looking at now? Okay.
So, we'd have the regular council meeting that morning, and then follow up with a joint meeting in the afternoon?
Sure. Okay, there, right?
Sure.
Okay, let's check that out.
We will confirm with P&amp;Z, and I'll let you know as soon as I can.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving through the agenda again. We have a new lease agreement with the soccer association that is leasing the space on the Sports Park property. We are moving the nature center item. That'll be considered a little bit further in the future. We have finally our convention and visitor center lease. We finally made all of the amendments to that. I think we'll have that ready to go. We have a fee waiver request for the use of Field C at Lady Bird Johnson Municipal Park. And that is it at this point. Any questions on future agenda items additions? Thank you.
We have considered sponsoring the 4th July parade. Do we want to, we haven't listed, but not a date. Do we want to move that up and take care of that, or do we need to talk about that staff? That staff?
What? So, we're coordinating with Tech dot on that to determine what they're going to require from the city as far as traffic control goes. We are working with a consulting engineer who's developing a proposal to prepare that document and assuming Tech dot's going to require something, hoping to get a response any day now.
What if they required the last 50 years?
Very basic plans, needing to be more detailed. We have reviewed a number of other city agreements that they have standing agreements with Tech dot. Some are very basic. Bernie's is very basic, but other ones are very complex. So, just waiting on that determination from the state.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, it's down. Oh, okay. Gotcha. Anything else about future agenda items?
Just a note that next week is coffee with the city manager and the neighborhood town.
All right, anything else?
No, sir. All right. Go to executive session items this morning. One is to consider and discuss appointment evaluation reassignment and our duties of a public officer, in this case, the municipal court judge, and consider and discuss appointment evaluation, et cetera, of a public officer specifically, the nomination from the city to fill vacancies on the less than 30% of the present district.
Maybe we go out of regular into executive session.
Second.
A motion second to go from regular into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're back in regular session. I have a couple of things to take action on relative to a motion. Item 11A, anybody?
Make a motion we select Jill Tabor to replace her appointment for the Gillespie County Appraisal District.
Just to be clear, that's item 11B, good?
Second.
Of motion and second to appoint Jill Tabor to nominate her. Correct, that's the right term. To nominate Jill Tabor to the Gillespie Central Appraisal District Board. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Other item?
I move that we raise municipal court judges' PTO pay time off from six hours of pay period to eight hours of pay period.
Second. Motion second. Further discussion, questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, council.